When Zane was running his giveaway at nine o'clock last night. It was billing the external messaging and it was, I could see the credits going at about a dollar a minute, which seemed pretty high because. He wasn't sending that many messages, so I don't know how many external users are in that chat, but I was running the math on it. It bills at point zero zero eight three. Per external message and I mean, even if we sent. I don't know. Ten thousand of them, that would have been eighty, well, there's no way it was ten thousand, that would have been eighty-three bucks, but, well, yeah, it was probably a thousand, so eight bucks draining off the account, it makes sense. You know, he sends fifty messages, it gets pushed out to.
Yeah, that external chat is a killer.
Yeah, so if you've got twenty-five people receiving those. And he sends out fifty messages, that's twelve fifty times point zero zero eight three, ten bucks, that's about right. So, just something for us to consider. Good thing Twilio blocks it at fifty people and. We'll, we'll figure that out.
Uh, JD, I have one suggestion here.
So.
Uh, like, why not we send like after sending some like ten to fifteen message, we can send to external user. Please join our, if you, if you want to access more, please join the circles. That thing we can do.
A- and then like, don't send them anything more?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that, that would limit our cost, but then again, that just like. People don't get messages then.
Hmm, yes, like, like, uh, like, we can send them like after some period of time, if message is happening group, we can send lots of things happening in that group, come and join. That thing we can do, if you.
What were you guys talking about there?
I meant was giving an idea, he just was throwing something about the external chat. Saying that we, after fifteen messages. We cut off, he said, we cut off the external users. And. Then we tell them, download circles. To continue.
That's an option.
It can really, it can really run away when you get a chat that, that's really going crazy.
You know, I don't know. Why this just occurred to me, how I didn't think of this. Uh, it just connected this morning for me. I don't remember discussing the link. From the chat. Bringing you into as an external user versus. Inviting you like any other invite link and, and adding you to the chat, I always, I, I think I was under the impression. It was gonna add you to the chat when you download circles. But it was still gonna be an invite link. And. I don't remember who I talked to or where the decision was made that it was gonna. Be like an external user in the chat. Does anybody else remember that conversation? I mean, I know we're doing it for tagging. But not from the link. That copy, in fact, it was that link.
Wait, what do you mean, yeah, the copy link?
Yeah, in the chat.
That doesn't add you into the group as an external user.
Doesn't. I thought that's the one, I thought that's where the problem lied.
No, we, we watched the guy's session replay yesterday.
Yeah.
He went and he manually added five hundred people.
Oh, right, 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 right. He didn't send the link.
He didn't send the link, he should have sent the link.
So, okay, so Danny, yesterday you, you told, or not yes, well. Yesterday is when you described it to me, but it happened on Saturday, but I think yesterday you said. That you told the guy to do that versus copy the link.
I gave him both options. I said, he's like, how do you add members to the chat? I said, you can click the shareable join link, or you can add members from your contacts.
Okay, but you probably weren't really specific about if you add members to your contacts during an external chat, right?
Right, 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 right.
In hindsight. I'm, I would have just told the guy to share the link, I thought that's what we tell everybody, share the link, I mean, it's not a bad idea to tell people. Out of contact, cause like, that'd be great if they add one person.
No, in hindsight, yeah.
You just said that he was gonna add.
Yeah.
People.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he, did he say he was gonna add five hundred people?
No.
No, he just went and did it.
Right, there's no way that Danny could have known.
Well, now, well, now we, I, I didn't even think of that, because I would only just said, copy this link, but. I mean, it definitely doesn't hurt if you want someone to be. If we want them to join right away.
Right.
To ask them to add him as a contact, but it just has to be clear.
Oh, you know what I was just thinking of, cause at first my thought was, I'm pretty sure that there's like that little pop-up that says. That they'll be added as an SMS if. Uh, they don't have circles yet. But I don't think that that message is in with the contacts, I feel like we could use that same messaging. There so that people are aware in that situation.
Yeah. Where, in which pop-up are you talking about?
Um, so if you go to, uh, plus chat and then plus group. Or actually, I think when you get to plus chat, it comes up.
Yeah, the, the drawer, okay, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, like, obviously a different design because of the placement, but that same concept could be there too.
Yeah. Let me think about how, how we do that, yeah, but.
Those Thuleo messages, those external messages too get really expensive, like I was walking up last night, it's about eight cents per message.
I thought it was like a ten.
I mean, sorry, sorry, eight, eight thousand.
Yeah, eight, eight tenths of a cent.
Eight tenths of a cent, yeah.
Crazy, like. It takes a while to get to four dollars, five dollars, and four dollars a download is really good.
Well, times, well, John, then you times it by fifty. You got eight tenths of fifty cents, let's say. So now you're gone, you're, it's forty cents per message at that point. And now at ten messages, you're at your dollar, your four dollars.
Fifty external users in a chat?
Correct. Which basically, think about that UFC chat, every ten mess, every, what I said, every. Uh, ten messages is four dollars, so every, every message. Is forty cents. Every message that goes on in that group.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Well, there's currently that many external users?
Yeah.
How many? Fifty?
Yeah.
Really?
In that UFC chat?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he max, he maxed it out.
But they had, a lot of them.
Oh, but some exited.
Exited.
Okay, let me see what the current count is. Actually, I can run the API call, so.
We spent six dollars in external messaging today.
Let me see how many external users we have active in the UFC chat.
And keep in mind, there could be external users in other chats too, so.
Yeah, this is a good gauge, though.
True.
Forty-four.
So. Forty-four are currently. Getting us a message, have any of them sent a message?
Let's see. Three of them did.
Okay, interesting, well, we know one.
No, these are, I think. No, I deleted that guy.
Okay, so three since inception or three today?
Since inception, they were, oh, yeah, they were early, it looks to be. Yeah, from April, let me see, the message was created.
Oh, so this is not the UFC chat?
This is the, okay, nevermind, they sent their messages on the, on the tenth.
What was, what were we looking at, said April, was it something in April?
Uh, looks like that's when they were first created as an external user, let me see if they were ever converted.
Okay, so, so this is global, like, this isn't just. The UFC chat.
Right now, I'm just looking at the UFC chat.
Cause that was in April.
I mean. Created as an external member in the system in April. So it looks like they were added to multiple external chats, and one of them did convert over.
Okay.
So that would be. Chelsea. AES L E H C. That was the user that did convert.
That Chelsea backwards, by the way.
Oh, my god.
Do you know who that is, Danny, is that one of Zane's friends?
I can find out.
I don't know, I, I just think it, I just.
Invite her user key is. White gorilla.
I see. Okay, yeah. Two days ago, so she converted, okay, cool. Were you, was Amit saying something?
Uh, UFC chat has fifty-one external users, Jerry, I think.
But, uh, only forty-four active in Twilio. So, yeah, forty-four.
How can it have ones that aren't active?
Once we shut off the web hook. Which. They could still unsubscribe and they won't be sent messages.
They can unsubscribe.
Right, and then, and like, we won't send the messages, it's just that, when with the web hook disabled, we didn't record it to our system.
So they, they are getting, they're not getting messages?
Right.
I see. Okay. How, how many others, so Chelsea messaged, you said, right? Man converted?
Yes, but they only all messaged, or let me see what hap, let me get a timeline on that, actually.
Okay.
Oh, let's see, she sent the message at. Twenty fifty-six and she created the user at. Let's see. So she sent the message at. Five forty-three, okay, so she create, she sent the message after she onboarded. So she never sent the message as an external user.
Okay. Um, okay, what is about the others, how many, how many of those others converted?
How many other of the, uh, so people that did not send a message?
You're saying, actually, yeah, let's start with people who did send a message, how many other people sent a message?
Okay, only. Three of them sent a message. And of those three, one converted. Um, which was Chelsea, but that, but that's only a people that sent a message. Now. Let's see.
I, I wanna look at this for all the chats too, let, these are the kinda, we need reports on this, Ian and Todd are gonna work with you on this stuff, I want. Regular reports on all these key things, all the strategies we're doing, so, cause. Without the information, we're kinda blind. But, um. Part of being prepared for these strategies is also preparing. The, the test environment, the data analysis, so at the end of the. Whenever strategy we run. I wanna look at. The results and see. How it's working, cause maybe we should keep it the way it is, maybe we should change it, you know, I don't, I don't really know the answer, cause I don't have. I don't have the, uh. While, while you're doing that, um, I mean. Did you push out the OTA?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, but I don't, I didn't see a new build.
No, the OTA would not be as a build.
I know that, but that, that's only as good as if users. Close, close the app and reopen twice.
Yeah, true.
So, that's no good, we need the build.
Well, you want the build only with that fix?
Not necessarily.
It's like the thirteen, the one, uh, thirty, the one that it's in the, um, this life.
Yep.
That's, that's, it's all working good, like, we don't have that problem there.
I see. Okay. Chantel and Todd, you guys have been testing with thirty. Uh, Chantel, I know you had a problem with a keyboard situation, did that get resolved, you talked to Ismail about it?
No, I, I didn't ever get a response on that.
Ismail, did you see the message in development yesterday? I was in meetings pretty much all day there.
Yeah, hmm, which one are you referring to?
Kind of an urgent situation, um, that Chantel has with her, with chat. Is it always like that, Chantel, or like, what triggers that?
Let me double check if it's always, I know in the specific situation where I've noticed it. Is where I entered the chat through notification and then sent a message and then edited it. Can't think of if it's, if I opened the app, so let me double check on that.
Oh, it's the one where it covers the, the edit?
So this, this is what I was talking about in our meeting yesterday, Todd and Danny, I feel like if I. Get sucked away from this team. We lose days and. This is a perfect example, we do have a build. Ready for production, but not really, if, depending on how many Androids it's expecting. And they had all day yesterday to work on it, but it got overlooked. Probably messing around with a flash list that doesn't, or a legend list that we don't even really need right now. I'm, I, when I'm, this stage of the game that we're in, I have to be in a lot more meetings. Podcasts, appearances, strategy sessions, there's a lot of stuff going on, cause we're, you know, we're promoting the app, we're growing. Our user base, I have to count on you guys, Chantel, Jerry. Uh, Ismail, I mean, Amit, you guys, I, I need you guys to, um. Kinda do what I do and make sure we're, we're staying on top of the most high priority stuff, like, obviously, if there's a really serious Android bug, bad. That's gotta get resolved over anything else, but nice to have stuff, like a nice, a faster list, scroll list is nice. But we gotta get the really bad bugs out of the way, cause now we have two. We have one affecting. Uh, the circle trust, which cannot be edited, it was kind of a core feature, and then potentially this chat bug, which is also a core feature. So, go ahead, Chantel, same.
Yeah, I just, I just checked and, um, by not clicking on a notification and it's still the same thing.
In other words. All chat is messed up for you?
Only if I edit.
Edit.
Yes.
Edit, okay.
Yeah, it's not typing a new message, it's only editing.
Okay, and you can back out of it if you have to?
Um, yeah, I can, I can get out of it. Um, I believe I use my native back button, so, let me see if there's any other way outside of that.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming this is Android only. And is it this, only this build thirty, so Ismail, were, were you aware of this problem yet?
I, no, this code hasn't been touched in the latest build, in terms of, you talk about the keyboard covering the.
Well, she said keyboard covering the input, but that was misleading, cause I, I know about that problem on Android, but that's not what it was, Chantel. The whole background blurred and the blur covered your whole screen, right? Above your keyboard.
Yeah, and that's always been there anytime I edit.
So you've never been able to edit a message on Android?
No, I have been. It's just, I, this is. Something that. Uh, I think I brought it up before.
When you say it's all, when it's always been there. It's always been a problem that's prevented you from.
No, 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 the blur has always been there.
Yes, there is a blur when.
That's, that's, that's in the design, so that, that's what I'm saying is always been there, the blur has always.
That's also misleading, so the, the blur is part of the design, so that's expected.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Has the defect, how long has the defect been there? As far as you know, like, just recently or all along?
Uh, I remember it being in like twenty-eight and I brought it up. And I thought that was addressed, and then I noticed it again in this one.
Hmm, well, in twenty-eight, that, that one was covering some of the main chat, I think, or something like that. It was different.
That's the one I remember too. Yeah, I remember that too, it was different, it was the partially keyboard covering the input.
Right, that's it, yeah, you, you could still see the top, that's what it was.
That's different, though, there was no, there weren't editing, there was no blur background, so this is a new defect.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it was clear with my video of what I was trying to say.
Not really, cause like, I, I didn't, I didn't know you're long pressing, so I didn't know you're editing.
Oh, okay.
Right, it just looks like you're bringing up a keyboard, I, I didn't know what was going on there.
Oh, yeah, it, I have, um, tap on, so you could see that I was clicking edit.
Yeah, just treat it like we don't know.
A little more clear, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, be careful to not mix one, uh, defects, like, cause this is different than the one where the input field was blocked.
Yes.
Okay, so Ismail, there may be a new problem with editing, I'm a hundred percent sure, but.
I mean, it hasn't been touching quite a bit, so I'll, I'll have to see, um.
Always go back a couple builds and check it too.
Even like, it hasn't been touched ever since it was stable.
That's, I know, so that if your theory is that it hasn't been touched, so it should be, should have been fine a couple builds ago, that, that's a good clue to.
Yeah. And I'm just testing it right now with iOS as we speak, and it is, looks like it's working fine. Um, I'm gonna try it on my few Androids here. Um, I mean, I can't seem to onboard on. On Android emulator, is there any like tricks you use there?
Like, you can onboard in Android what?
Emulator? Like, I can't get past the off. It keeps throwing errors. Now, this is not in production, this is just on my emulator. Without a physical device, it would work.
Hmm, uh, let me try and see, like, what, what kind of error, like, do you have errors or?
Yeah, give me a second, I'm, I'm loading, uh.
Okay, I was just looking at my message and I just wanted to see. Where I could have been a little more clear. Because I said, I'm in thirty and I'm having issues where the keyboard covers when, uh, what I'm writing, when I'm editing a message. And. You said, did it always have the blur like that, and you can see where the emojis are and where it says copy and edit, and so I said, yes.
Yeah, the confusing part for me is that it's not the same problem. And.
Yeah, but in my original message about, cause he said that it was a little misleading, so I just wanted to know how I could have been a little more clear.
Message yesterday, original message or original message from a week ago?
No, and yesterday.
Okay, so not your original message, but yesterday's message?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the, just those little, those little nuances, they're, they're slightly misleading, so you did say editing, and I probably read that, and that was. Probably in my mind, but then I'm thinking, but she's saying that she's still having this problem. Where it blocks, read it again where it says it blocks, I'm not looking at it, but what did you say?
Um, where the keyboard covers what I'm writing when I'm editing a message.
Okay, and that's not exactly what's happening, right, cause is the keyboard even covering it, or is the blur covering it?
No, it's the keyboard, you can see it drop down.
Okay. But this time there's a blur, cause you're editing.
Right.
I see, so just more, all those specifics of like, this, it's not the same defect. Um, it's, you could say it's similar.
Okay.
And that would, that would be helpful too.
Yeah, I just wanted that feedback of where I could have gone better on that.
Yeah, for sure, and then also Ismail needed to see it too, so that, that's another thing, follow, when you have a defect like that, especially when, you know, we're, we're trying to get this. Production build, make sure Ismail gets tagged, you know, I did ta, I did tag him.
It's time too for Trello, like.
Yeah.
This thing could be sitting at the top of a Trello board as high priority.
Yep, we just talked about that.
Yeah, also, I do read development, but sometimes it gets a little. Big, so I could miss things, to be honest, so if anything is related to me, if you message me like one-on-one, I would for sure.
That's true. Ismail's been very good at. If, whenever I message you, you're, we're on it. So, I, I can take some responsibility for that, cause I did put it in development, and then I, I think development had a bunch of messages in it after that.
Yeah, we were working, we, we were pivoting down at the same time with that, uh, S M T issue.
Yep.
With Amin, so I can see why it would have gotten lost.
For sure. All right, so then. Back to what Amin was saying about build thirty. I'm weighing in my mind if. The defect is, we can live with it. You know. Over editing circle, I guess it comes down to, do, do I prefer if people can edit their circle trust, or if they can edit. Messages on Android, well, the other question is, i- if you were to go to the App Store, the Google Play Store, Chantel, is that bug there? Um, before I make my decision on pushing build thirty, can you check and see if you have that same bug from the Google Play? Version?
Also, can I see if Todd is experiencing the same thing? Stuffing all the Androids.
Yeah, good point, did you catch that, Todd?
I did, let me double check, I'm not sure I've seen that.
Okay, and are you in the Google Play version, do you have a phone on that?
I do, yes.
Okay, s- start with that one, and then let's start, and then let's go to build thirty, you're on thirty, right, Chantel?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let me check, be right back.
Okay, let me check, be right back.
Also, I mean, I just on my emulator, it told me that, you know, basically this app is not authorized to use Firebase because it's not from the Play Store. So.
How would we log in using an emulator?
Like, do you have a way around it?
It it should because like um there's some um. Uh like conditions where like it's basically the emulator like it we're not using the really the app check on the emulation. Because just also, uh I was I was just about to do that, let me let me see if I have.
Yeah, I think if I put a test number actually just worked right now, but if I put an actual actual number, it won't work.
Yeah, that's true, it needs a phone number because everything is connected.
Okay, okay, I see. Alright, well, it's because like sometimes I like to have them two different accounts just because if I want to like.
Yeah.
Stuff, but that's fine, I'll I have a physical device, I just um. Have, it just takes a minute to recreate the build, I sometimes I delete it to download the play version, play server version for like testing, but yeah. Anyways, I'm just gonna see also on my emulator if it's doing that whole covering the input when you edit thing.
You're checking it right now, Ismail?
Uh yeah, I'm just onboarding, almost done.
So yeah, I'm having the same issue as Chantel. In the Play Store version, I believe here is twenty seven.
Okay, in the Play Store version, okay, so that means we're not losing anything, so Danny, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Go ahead and push build thirty, put a rush on it. Um for iOS and then let's also submit it to the Google Play Store.
Okay.
Alright.
And just to confirm with Chantel too, when editing any message in chat. Of course, the background blurs as we expect, but I can't see what I'm typing.
Right.
Right, okay.
So this goes past a little ways, at least to build twenty seven.
That was working at one point, from my understanding, it's just not now.
Yeah, it definitely worked before, it was something I've tested in the past and it worked beautifully.
Weird, okay, let me see what change in those files, because I I don't, I haven't haven't tested it quite a bit, so let me see.
So I guess I mean, we don't necessarily need a new build because build thirty has um has no issues with um. At first of all, actually, let me get, I have another question, what le- leads to the S O T problem, the editing? Was it, is it only in situations where there's no contact permission allowed?
Yeah, it's only when the contact's not allowed and. And because um it seems like when we introduced, so that query we use therefore uh fixing the contacts, we use it in chat as well. And as we were working on chat, we added a new field called is member, that way would return as a field called is member. And we will write into the cache manually, so whenever you delete from the S O T. I write to the cache manually, so that user you just deleted is gonna appear in the suggestions list. And if it's already in the suggestions list, it will say is added, so writing to the cache. It requires a new um a field that was forgotten to add there when we uh introduced it. So it was breaking, that's that's what what happened.
Uh I I don't, that's okay, I just still don't get why a backend change doesn't fix the problem.
It's 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 all a front end uh problem, it's not a backend.
But the because the front end is looking for something that's not there, right?
No, it's the like we write to the cache manually, meaning like the cache stays in the phone device, but not sending anything to the uh backend.
I see.
Yeah, John, another thing too is that, so an example he gave is that there is this new field that Amin is talking about called is member. And like for searching chat and stuff, that field is requested and read and that's part of the GraphQL schema. That's part of that query and the only solution to fix that one edge case would be. It just to satisfy the schema was to remove that field from the backend. But now if I fix that one case, every other valid case would break and probably give a white screen. Because now the GraphQL on the client doesn't match the GraphQL on the server.
I see.
So yeah, would be horrendous that if if I just removed that field to to fix this one case, it was like pick one or the other.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well. Hopefully we'll get the builds approved quickly and then that'll be the end of that, did you already push the OTA, Amin?
Yeah, I did it.
Okay. Alrighty. Have you tested the OTA since you pushed it to make sure?
Yeah, uh I did tested it on the T builds.
Okay.
It was like I went through like the last ten builds and verified where it happens. I mean, happens in all of them, but the ones that matters are the one that was uh pushed to the store.
Okay, yeah, I saw that you had those builds listed, but then after that, when you pushed the OTA, would you also confirm that it worked?
Uh I mean, on the simulator, but I can verify it's gonna be working on um. On the App Store version.
Yeah, because it's not the same, you didn't, you don't receive an OTA on your simulator.
Yeah, but like the fix I did, it will be published to the OTA like.
I know, but OTA has more going on, like there are, I mean, there's still a possibility. Of something unexpected outside your simulator, right? Because now you're in the real environment with OTA, which is technology in and of itself.
Meaning like you you saying like the updates would not be applied or?
Perhaps, it's hard, who knows, you know, we we don't know till we, I let's put it this way, you don't know for sure. Because I what my question, my original question was, did you test the OTA and you said yes? But you didn't really, so you don't really know for sure for sure if the OTA took and will fix people's phones. You can say probably it all should work, you can say that, but you don't know for sure that it did work.
Because I don't see anything else that would not make it work, it was a one line change.
I know, but I mean, if I had a nickel for every time somebody said that.
Well, yeah, I can, I I can verify that right now for you.
Okay, because I I just, I don't, I don't like to rest on the assumption that. There's no reason why it shouldn't work because I've heard that so many times, Jeff Robinson was the worst that. Every time he's like, oh yeah, I should be, we should work fine, and then and it never worked on the first draft and usually not the second or third try. Now I get that this is very simple and probably, but oh, the OTA itself is a variable, not just your fix. The oh, my point is, the OTA is complex technology in and of itself. So, and when was the last time we've done an OTA, there perhaps there's some.
Um yeah, okay, I can verify that right now.
Ismail, you had your hand up, what's up?
Uh I was just gonna say, I mean, did you get those OTAs to work last time they weren't?
Oh, yeah, um the GitHub build action, no, it's always fading for that error, um I didn't like had capacity to work. I tried it, I tried to fix that, could not, I it was not, I was like, I'm gonna just do it from my local machine.
Oh, okay, okay, because I was gonna say, yeah, on the GitHub, it's still showing errors, so I was like.
Yeah, I did it from my local machine and the other, I'm I'm, I don't know what's going on with it like the. Because it works on my machine and not on GitHub machines, maybe it has something with the RAM. Like it it does not, because it just it says out of memory.
Yeah, which uh we cleared the cache, I remember and all that, but.
Yeah, I did that, that. I I don't know what's going on there and I was like, um I will not bother myself with that right now, since we don't OT a lot, so.
Yeah, I I.
Yeah, like we can do it like from our local machine and it works just like in a minute or two, you have OTA pushed.
So I wasn't quite following that, is there a problem with OT?
No, um so like we pushed the OTA either like we pushed the OTA through the GitHub servers. Like we don't wait from our like machine, like our local machine. And for that, you need a code that needs to work on the GitHub machine, you need what command to be run. And that command when runs on GitHub servers, it breaks, but it breaks for uh for a reason of like. Out of memory, like it's like you're saying, they're not allowing us like a good amount of resources. For that specific um built pipeline, which I don't think so, but like from locally it just works like. Uh yeah, and and I verified like the the OTA was published because we do OTA through Expo. And Expo has a dashboard where they list everything and it's there, like I can share my screen where it's like. The OTA was published with all the like um it was published.
Well, um I guess let's test it.
Yeah, yeah, let's do it, um I'll go right now and.
Yeah, it looks like the screen has been touching like three weeks. Hmm, it says fix edit text not always showing. Fix edit text not always showing, oh, that was different. So yeah, let me see, uh. Has this been going on for three weeks where you can't edit or?
At least since build twenty seven, because Todd just tested that from the App Store.
Interesting, okay, I'm a little more into this, I just so annoying how iOS and Android are not in sync in a lot of these things.
Yeah, no doubt. I'm gonna keep looking at it, um Omar, did you already give your update?
Uh no, John.
Okay, why don't you tell us?
So today, first I work with Danny regarding Tullio. And like we deployed Tullio look up bypass on production, but later we reverted that, so like then then it found it. Then after I work for creating one API for whales like we smell suggested me. Uh we need to be towards the right smell where it will return offset and next offset things.
Uh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I have created that one and created pull it, because Jerry, you have added a comment. And I have updated that P L also, so.
Uh I mean, uh I'm, are you the one who worked on the silence notification?
Silence notification already fixed by Jerry, like there was some issue uh with GitHub player, did Jerry?
But yeah, it was a wrong table I was looking at, there was like an earlier attempt we made at this table. That was then that was out, so I ended.
Should be working now?
Yeah, so I that is smell you, I can see you turn off notification, UFC chat. And your player ID not coming there, so you will not receive the notification, I checked that click.
Okay, okay, cool.
So um it is, it is working the uh the pause and silence?
Yes, John.
Good.
That's a promising.
Okay, thank you.
And yeah, John, I just like installed the latest version from the store, which is the twenty seven. And yeah, the the software is fixed there, I can delete.
Okay, after the OTA.
Like, yeah, I deleted all my OT, like always the X button, it's always works now on DOT.
Yeah, so you forced closed and reopened twice?
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, I did the only ones, because I just, yeah, I just installed the app, it was not there, so I closed the app, opened it. And it has the update.
Okay, so sometimes you only have to do it once?
I think it's only if you use it, just install the app.
That helps, okay, so if they just install that count, maybe counts as once.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting.
I mean, if we want to work on DOT more where like. Uh make it less steps, usually have to do do twice we can.
I was about to say, that's funny, because we've never, is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible, like when we when we just did DOT, we did not want to go fancy with it, we just. Make it to the minimal basic.
Wow, so it is actually possible to update someone's app without having they have to force close?
We're gonna tell them, we're gonna tell the user, hey, there's a new update, like a banner or something, reload the app. Like for you. Yeah.
We suppose they would still have to close and reopen.
That's true, it needs to be done.
Okay, but it could be done, we could make it to where it's only one time?
Yeah, yeah, and the reason again, because in the past we had really bad problems with OTA. I guess that's why we don't, you don't really trust it because it was done really poorly and that's. Why when we introduce it back, the one like with the very minimal basic working. OTA, but we can make it where we can have a banner, we can have a toast, we can um. And like even we have the critical OTA, if there's something critical, we can block the whole app, like we added that uh later on. So, yeah, can can do that if you want.
Okay, okay, let me think about that a little bit, um. Alright, well, I'm I'm glad the test worked and. So Danny, you're pushing the builds, right? I think he said he had to take a call, so I mean, can you continue then, um what else did you work on yesterday?
Uh yesterday I worked on the um. Fixing that, I'm not sure if you remember, but there's a white screen that Jerry shared, like a friend of. Yeah, Jerry was having this problem when he's joining a group from an invite link, it was this white screen. Or hit, and yeah, we um we tracked it down, it was like a front end issue there. Where if the user decided to do a go back, swipe to go back after the invite.
Oh, yeah.
It will fall back and it will fall into this issue, so I fixed it, now it will not be the case, uh I felt like the user. Clicking on that invite, be invited to the group and everything, if he does right back, it will be the lobby. It was like frame, it was like that white screen, that's why it was stuck in the, now it's gonna be the lobby and it's gonna be working as expected. Uh also fixed the um, like I removed the done. And the plus grouping button on the compose, if you're doing it from the start convo.
Okay.
Uh there's that and yeah, um worked over Jerry a bit on that issue. The role of any S O T, OTA and everything, and also just like had a little bit of time to work on the uh. The legend list for the chat, because uh I was I was maybe thinking with doing it like backwards. I uh I was like, let let me do it, um like piece by piece, let me get the working version from them. And that's introducing our logic one by one until it breaks, I would know where it breaks, like I'm I'm halfway there. It's not like um still not like a promising uh progress, like oh, but like um I'm I'm still on it.
Halfway there, like you're, you feel like it's.
Yeah, I feel it's gonna work, it's just like I don't have any uh working thing issue right now.
But you're taking a different approach?
Yeah.
Okay, and this would be for chat?
Oh, for chat, yeah.
And okay, because yeah, getting getting rid of the, like if you scroll really fast, I'm not seeing like big blank spaces like. Being able to prevent that from happening, that that'd be, I think that'd be really important, I almost don't want to switch lists if that's not possible.
Mm hmm, and also like, well, well, that's that's the thing is like with the illusion list, like you can scroll fast without seeing any blanks. And also the like as new messages is coming in, the jump will not happen, so this is.
That's what you, that's you're hoping for that.
Well, we're hoping for the whole suite, you know, like because this has a lot of other fixes, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna be this and it's gonna be the performance, it's gonna be a lot of other things, so.
So Legend List is is known to when it's, when it's really optimized and working perfectly to not lose. The content like not go blank.
Yeah.
Okay. And you expect that that should be realistically possible with ours, with chat?
Yeah, because like when I was like searching, like I found this uh, project. It is, it's called Waven, it's some, like it is Slack but open source, it is a really big project and using Legend List. Like they start using Legend List too, it just got introduced. And it's like if you use their app, it's like really slack and like they have the chat smooth, everything.
Hmm.
They're doing it and it's open source, so that was my uh, where I was like uh, looking through the ideas and see how I can do it.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, cool. Um. Well, then I guess we should keep working on it.
Yeah, meantime, if there's anything I can help with, um, yeah, let me know.
For sure, yeah. I can't remember if there, do you have any in your notes, like any?
Yeah, I have one thing. I have one thing in the um, like the sync button. Remember have like if every time you pageinate through the list of the suggestions, there is that sync button at the bottom. Like um, for example, the edit is OT, yeah, we can see the edit is OT. Right now with the latest spell, if you pageinate, you will see that sync button, like scrolling.
That's right.
Every time.
It appears real quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Legend List help that?
No, that's entirely different thing.
Totally different, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you fixed it now, would the fix carry over to the Legend List?
Um, yes, it has nothing to do with the Legends, yes.
Okay. Just don't wanna duplicate efforts, but um, and also it's not that bad, so.
Uh, do you um, do you know like what issue I'm talking about?
I do, yeah, the same context when you pageinate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah, it was, it's annoying, but it's not that bad.
Well, the only issue that I have, oh wait, there is other two, um. I'm not sure if the uh, show mode, we ask. Oh yeah, there is a task in like it says show model to ask user to enable notification when sending. When sending a message. Oh yeah, if a user sending a message and they don't, they're not having notification on.
Yeah, that one's a nice to have. I mean, it's not like critical.
Yeah, like tho- like those that I have and are really critical, that's why like if there's anything else that it's blocking, it help with.
Right, yeah, okay. Okay, so now um, yes, stay with the Legend List. I mean, if you can get it to work. Like you're expecting as good as that open source Slack app, that'd be really cool.
Okay.
Okay, okay, cool. All right, thanks for the update. So Ismail, you're, you were going back a few builds on that edit situation or?
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm still trying a few things out. I'm not sure why it's doing that. Um, looks like it has been doing that for a few builds. Um, I think it was working at one point, so. Trying to figure out what exactly broke it, but I know edit also was not working a hundred percent on. On the beginning, like there was some changes in each, but none of them were style changes, so that's why I'm just a little confused.
When was edit not working all the way? What do you mean?
So, uh, one time, I remember one change, I at least the last one I touched it three weeks ago is where you long hold edit and then it would. Well, it never made it to production. I fixed it before I made it in there, but it was basically um. One time it would show, one time it wouldn't, like one time it would pre-populate the text field, one time it won't. But that got fixed, but that that I removed that and didn't do anything, so switching to see what exactly the problem is here. Uh, because with that keyboard avoidance, um. I'm actually relying on the mo- like the modal itself had a prop that was working on iOS and Android. That did a pretty good job, so not sure why right now, it's, is anything that doesn't like or?
You might wanna run it by, I mean, he's worked with that keyboard avoidance stuff.
This one's different, this is, it's not using that same library, it's using, like I said, there was one built in the modal. Which, you know, like I said, seemed to be working fine and we tested on both pl- platforms, but I'm just like, there's something that broke out. I'm just trying to find what that thing is.
Okay.
And if I need help with, for I mean, I'll definitely reach out.
Okay.
Well, first I wanna see why it's, it's doing that. Um, but also I have a few questions for. Um, well, you and Jerry, first of all. Uh, or actually, I mean, too. So with the, I mean, do you remember the members or when you go to members inside a chat? Uh, you know how we have check marks on people who are inside, like who are members of the chat? And those che- check marks can be for people who are um, external users. Uh, and the way you check that currently in the app, you check the type. If you remember, and if it's like, if it's equal to.
Yeah.
Member contact. Or something like that. So. The only problem with that is Jerry yesterday added external users through Google or he named it my Google voice. I'm not sure how Jerry added it, but. That one had a different type, which was called, instead of like member contact, it was called like user contact or something like that. So it didn't detect it as select, even though that person was a member of the, of the chat, so.
He's a member of the chat and he's external user?
Yes, but the member, but you you know how you're checking the the type?
Yeah, I know, and I was just asking if he's, if he's a member and the user or a member.
External, external and a member.
Okay, oh yeah, um.
So I was wondering, maybe we, we add a field instead of relying on the type, so that we may be a more solid solution?
Well, type, they should, they should not be changing.
Hmm, that's a good point, too. Um, why did that change the the type, um?
Because that's, I guess, yeah, it makes sense because this is a different type. When I was like doing. The uh, to that condition is like I wanted to know. Uh, because that type, checking the type will tell me this is a user and a member of this group. That what it means that type. Now we have.
Yeah.
Different type, so we just have to uh, take that into consideration.
Hmm, but why is there a different type? Where did this new type come from? I thought we just have members and external users.
We're just working on this, like we were like only like has. Members and a user. Now we adding this new external user as well, so.
Well, what do you mean member and a user?
He's, he's a circles user, he is a circle user. That's what I mean.
No, Ismail's talking about an external user.
Yeah, I know, that's why Jerry introduced a new type, because we don't have that, right?
No, it's, it's, it's what's working, like. Like for example, in the UFC chat, we have a lot of external users and it does recognize them.
Mm-hmm.
But this specific one that Jerry, you added the last one, that Google one had a different type. I don't know if that's different than the rest of. The, the other members, like if it's a special case or something, but it did have a different type, so that's why it wasn't detected.
Yeah, because the one you sent me was, you're looking, you're filtering um, user members. And like, like yeah, an external user would never be a user member. A user member is a circle.
No, it, oh yeah, a user member, yeah, that's the type we're looking for. But how is it working on other chats? Like if you go to the other chats that have external users, will, are they all unselected at the moment?
I think so.
Oh. Oh, so that user member is still refer, is still referring to somebody who is a, who has a circles account?
Right, that's, that's why I called you yesterday, well, not yesterday, Saturday, was because there is issues with the mutation.
Hmm.
Well. Well, I'm looking, actually, I'm looking at the UFC chat right now and they're showing is, oh, they're showing is checked. They're all showing us checked, but um.
That's what I'm saying.
Toggle them either, so that's not really working correctly.
We can't toggle them, you said?
Correct, I cannot toggle them.
But why is it showing even check and the other one showing not check at all? Like there's something wrong with the logic there.
Hmm.
This is not adding up. Um, should we be depending on type name? I feel like maybe we should have a more. Like maybe a field for this would be. Better? I don't know.
But that's your, that's your field, is type name.
Hmm, uh, I mean, doesn't, isn't that, uh, okay, I guess. But wait, but so why is it working sometimes and sometimes not?
Well, it's not really working either way. I I guess.
But it is showing it as checked, whereas the other one it didn't show it checked at all.
That's true, but I can't change the toggle on it.
Hmm. Okay, I mean, I'll, I guess I'll try to use contact member, uh, type and add it as part of the list, uh, like part of the if condition. And see if that solves our problems. If not, I'll reach out again. Um, that was one thing I wanted to talk about. One more thing was. I know we want error messages where if somebody tries to remove a user and they don't have access, for example, and there's a bunch of errors there. Um. For as far as, you know, the design, the modal, the syntax, all that, is that gonna be like configma or are we gonna use a pre-existing modal? If so, uh, what are, what's the text gonna be in there? Like I was told to make it and I set everything up where right now I can detect the error and I can show the modal. But I don't know how the modal looks or what the error should say at the moment, so I don't know who's gonna be responsible for providing me with that information.
What, what error would this be?
This is for members, when you try to like add a member, remove a member and you don't have. Ready to do so?
Remember when the uh, remember when the guy was adding five hundred contacts and then he hit save and then it was spinning?
You know, that, that error, okay.
Right, so errors not like, if you're trying to individually remove someone? Well, it's that same mutation that gets called.
Okay.
So it's all that same logic. So if we wanna put in a modal, we put it in now and we haven't handled all these possible errors, error codes. In the back, we'll be throwing the error codes.
Okay.
Uh, so I need to know what modal to use, if it's gonna be a new one that we're gonna create from scratch or is it a pre-existing one? And for each error, I need to know what the exact text to show to the user.
Yeah.
I can have the backend return the text, John, but when uh. At that case, though, it's possible that it could be unknown errors that sound jarvlish. Um, and won't make sense to the user.
Well, yeah, I think it should be something that um, somewhat clear. So.
Like I'm returning friendly codes, uh, the only issue, what I'm saying with this is, is that.
Like you've reached the maximum uh, people you can add to, you know, as external, the maximum number of contacts you can add to this group chat, like that, that would be clear to me.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Now, in another scenario, let's say that we create another error code that could happen off this mutation.
Right, we have that in certain onboarding cases. There's certain things that fail for a variety of reasons. And we have different errors. And that's, that's important.
Right, and if we make a new error that the front end does not recognize, how does it get handled?
Well, the front end needs to recognize it. So we should.
What if, what if we make a backend change, just of something that un- unknowing that we don't know of right now? And I do it and I add it in the future.
So, well, we can have a general error, like a fallback one, so. We have to have a system where we have like known errors and unknown errors. Any known errors will display specific text. Any unknown errors would display a general message, like oops, something went wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, so can I leave you guys to that?
Ismail just wants to know what modal design to use. Uh, can we give a shot on that?
Yeah, no, nothing fancy, just something we already use.
Yeah, I was just thinking our standard like square rounded corners one.
Yeah.
That we use.
That would be, that'd be good.
More for alerts?
No.
Like our usual um, light one. I, I can show you which one I'm talking about.
More like a billboard that sticks in the middle of your screen with an X.
Yeah, exactly.
It has rounded corner.
Hey, we should have, we should have already, we should that already has part of our models, like I'm pretty sure it's used somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what we were saying is one that we are already using.
Okay, yeah, just let me know which one, if you wanna send me just a quick, just for me to make sure this is the right one and uh. As far as syntax goes, Jerry, should I map it from the backend one to one? Um, but we should also have a code, so. Each me- because like, if you wanna change the syntax in the future. Uh, the backend won't know if I'm looking for exact syntax, but if each syntax is associated with a code. The code will, although the backend would always, the frontend will always, will always not look at that code, but you can change the text as however you like and it will, it will still find it. That makes sense?
Hmm.
I guess not really. Um, going to those examples that I gave, that I gave you. There are. There are two codes, like I sent you four different ones right now, like you're not authorized to add members, you're not authorized to remove members. And those two, like those are pretty friendly for the user. However, there are errors that are saying like, uh, user is blocked by.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is. Let's have custom codes get returned with the message. Now, the reason I don't need the code is because if you wanna change the message, like right now, if I wanna, if I'm looking for a specific message, like. A specific word, like a specific sentence. Like you can see if you change that, the backend won't, like won't know what to do, it'll just go to the general layer one.
Hmm.
But if we have codes and you wanna change the syntax from the backend, it's looking at the code, it doesn't care what the, what the message is.
Hmm.
So each method, message should be associated with a code.
I see. Okay, I can make you some generic code doubles.
Awesome.
Okay, cool. Uh, another question there, Jerry, and maybe Ismail too, but so. On Saturday, that external user was showing up in that list and there was a check mark, but if you tried to uncheck it, it just wouldn't uncheck. Is there even any, like, functional way we could, I mean, if, I don't know how that work, being that it's an external user, if you were to uncheck. Is there a way to remove that user?
Well, that, I thought we were just discussing that the UI is kind of broken right now when it's handling external users that are in a chat. And we're, before we were talking about the error messages, we were talking about how to resolve it, and it looks like, um. Isma, I think you said you were gonna try something on that or?
For the external users?
Yeah.
So, uh, I'm gonna make it as, hmm, we'll have to look more at the logic, how it works, but yeah, I wanna see if, if I can use the, the type. Type name to, to basically mark it as, you know. Selected or not selected. Um, but I, I don't know if that's gonna work, you know, just by that, I don't know if that alone is enough, so I'd have to do some more. Research there and I'll let you know if it, if it goes well or not, we can do some more testing.
But my question though, Jerry, is um, is it even possible to remove an external user from the front end like that?
Well, they need to call a backend mutation.
And then what would happen? Like how do we, how, I mean. We, if it goes to Twilio?
Right, the backend would call Twilio to unsubscribe that user from like, like an administrative standpoint.
I see. Um, have we even ever tested that? Like, have you ever tried removing a user from, through the backend like that?
From backend, yeah.
And, okay, so why, but why couldn't we do that on Saturday?
Because the front end isn't working.
But you, but you can bypass the front end, right? Just through the backend?
Yeah, and I think Ismail tried to call the mutation, but I'm not sure if it was properly formatted, because what I was saying was like. Issues that was related to the formatting and I found that out whenever I got back to my computer. That century was saying something about the formatting of the mutation.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, but I'm still not sure if that's my answer yet, so. It could, if it was, we were, it should have worked, but like, we, it was something that we just hadn't configured properly upfront. But now it would have worked, like, as of today, it would work or? From what perspective? Are we talking? Um, just from the, like, shortest distance, like, regardless of the frontend. Just you being able to, from the backend, remove a user from a chat, external user. Yeah, I mean, it's just me making a Twilio API call, that, that's. But we couldn't do it Saturday. Right, so, but we can now? From the, the shortest path, the shortest path is me making a direct API call to Twilio. Yep. That, that, that's easy, like, that's what I would have done if I were at my computer. So you could have done it Saturday if you had a computer? I could have, I could have fixed this whole problem in about two or three minutes if I were at my computer. I see. Okay, so it's not like we need to change anything for it to work, you just. Access. Full-heartedly confident I fixed it within three minutes from my computer. See. Okay. So now, we need the frontend to make it that easy? Yeah. All right, okay. And. Or is there an easy way to also give the backend access to for like an emergency situation? Well, the backend should have, the backend, we have a mutation, it's, it's the mutation that Ismail's adding and he's fixing. He, he's fixing this mutation for like add or remove members from group. Yeah. And he's not able to call it properly right now from the frontend because of the format, because of the, of the list error that. You're not able to toggle the, the list properly. Yeah, realistically, it should just be a matter of unchecking the name, hitting save and they're out the group. Okay. Front end has. Anybody do that or? We're gonna give that only to the person who creates the group or how's that gonna work? Uh, well, right now, we have, uh, standards on groups, I have that. Once the gr- if the group is either like a protected group, like the UFC group would be one of our protected groups. Um, you, that only us can add, can remove users that are not ourselves. And, uh, yeah, just, and anybody could not jump in the group and start removing people. Uh, we're going to, we're, we're working on that chat admin, um, they ought to be making changes to it. Uh, and then that will give greater functionality for the admin to set certain properties that we can configure. To prevent certain permissions, like anybody being able to remove somebody from the group or. Being able to identify the admins for that group, because right now, the admins for groups are just us internally. But with the chat admin, they can define, like, per group admins. Yep, okay. So it, it will be, um, in its next form, though, it'll be possible for. Anybody to remove the external user, right? Until the group reaches like the protected threshold. Once the group reaches protected, which is either we flag it manually or it reaches like two hundred members. Right, right, okay. But when it's in an unprotected state, anybody could remove it. I see. Okay, um, well. What else does this mail need to, uh, pursue this? I think he said he was gonna try something and get back on that. Okay, you, the only question this mail on how to proceed?
Probably will, but not now.
Okay. Yeah, I'm here, we, we, we talked yesterday. Okay, cool. All right, well, um, let's keep working on that and. Um, I wanna get Wells' update and then I wanna come back to Jerry on the, some of the stats we were talking about earlier in the call, the beginning of the call about, um. Like external users, how many sent messages, how many? Um, joined, all that stuff. So, we'll get to that in a sec. But yeah, Wells, would you, uh, give us your update, please?
Yes, sir. Right, so I have been thinking with. Amit, we have the, the new endpoint. Uh, it did not contain games at first, though. So I sent that to Amit and he provided already another version of that and I am implementing it in here. Also, um, Ismail did send me a code reference for getting. Uh, the way we are rendering the lists and the best practices for. Uh, actually doing the pagination and et cetera to make sure that we don't have duplicate and that we have the best behavior there. And I'm implementing that on that screen also. And Danny did provide me a Amazon API. Where in the. In the. Uh, Rainforest API that we mentioned that has a couple. Uh, different APIs, but also has the Amazon data in there, so I can go there and do some testing. I just did not do this testing yet, cause I, 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 I just traveled back from my parents' house to my house, so. Was, was pretty tired, uh, but I will be, I will be doing that, I believe, by the end of today. Yeah, so I will look into the Amazon API, looking into the data, looking into the names that Chinto. Uh, brought me here and, and seeing what we see there and, and if perhaps it's a good idea to actually use that. Because it shows more trending data and more market accurate book recommendations and the kind of thing for me to show our users. So we will, we'll be doing that pretty soon now that the account is there. Uh, I did get to set it up and, and test it up on, on, uh, tester I have here, I use Insomnia. For doing this kind of requests, et cetera. So yeah, uh, code on the frontend regarding. The checking search for the, the pagination along with Amit. And also code that Ismail sent me as a reference. And this Amazon API investigation that I'm gonna be continuing working soon. Pretty much my updates.
Okay. Um, um, you haven't gotten the Amazon API yet?
Yeah, not ready, I got, I got to, I got to run it, but I was a bit tired, so I, I, I will be doing this today.
Okay, remind me again what you're doing with Amit?
Yeah, um, Amit is putting a next offset in the request that we have. For the checking entertainment, so when you go and check in and you wanna do, do animated and have those movie views and, and et cetera. For, for movie, TV shows, et cetera, et cetera. Um, in there, in where we, we have the change for the grid view. Um, the, the user needs to actually be able to scroll there and fetch more results. So that's what we are doing, Amit is helping me with the pagination, implementing the next offset on the backend.
Okay, I recall that, okay. All right, um, anything else to add there?
No, sir, I think, I think that's everything, that's, that's all.
Very good, okay, thank you, Wells. Okay, so then, yeah, Jerry, I would like to, uh. Discuss a little more about these stats, these, this data and, um, have an understanding of what's. What the, well, what, what are our results of this, are? Are people interacting with it and so, uh, um, and from what I understand, there's currently still forty-ish people? In one external chat?
Yeah.
Is that right? So they continue to receive the SMSs?
Yeah.
Do you know if they're confirmed delivered? Is that, are you able to verify that? That's making me. Re-authenticating the Twilio, Twilio's. Excessive with authentication, but, uh. Let's see. So, let's see, who are these people? Okay, this is never board club, have to see. Looks good, let me find. Just the message and I'm just gonna. Find it and, uh. Sure, I don't think this, uh. That's in the message. Yeah, cause I'm trying to find the, uh. WWE groups. Okay. Um. Okay, um, there are some that are failing, but it's not things that are, um. Not that they're unsubscribed. It said. It says, messages block or permissions are disabled for the region indicated by the two number. Um, yeah, it looks like a Puerto Rico number, I guess we cannot send to Puerto Rico. Interesting. Girl chat, it looks like our external chats only limited to US as well. That's what it looks like. Interesting, okay, I mean, you probably should send to Puerto Rico, it's a US territory. Um, and maybe Canada too, cause they have the same country code. I think we would have to apply with our A two P. Okay. Have to apply for permissions to message those countries through our campaign. Okay. Well, let's, uh, consider doing that, but then, so what else is failing? Unknown destination handset, the destination number you are trying to reach is unknown, may no longer exist. Okay. Oh, it could be a, um, it could be a deactivated number. Right, so how many, if we start eliminating these, how many are actually receiving? That's what I'm looking for. Gonna find, there's not an easy way, I just gotta start from a point and start counting up. Okay. I'd like to have easy ways of looking at all this stuff, you know, um. Spend some time when this dust settles a little bit and, and create reports and. Interfaces, systems that make it easy to gather pertinent information. We're kinda all over the place with our data. Comes from multiple sources, it's just not collected in a way that's really helpful. Yeah, it looks like thirty-six users, thirty-six of the forty-four are getting SMSs confirmed delivered. Interesting. The other ones are like. A no number or none US. Okay, and then every message is, uh, is forty cents to us, is that what you were saying? Every message I've sent is forty cents because it multiplies by fifty, well, we got forty-four in the group right now, it'd be a little less than that. But, yeah. It, it's not just any message sent to us, it would be any message that comes out of that chat. Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I meant. Um, did you figure out what happened when you removed somebody and it's still, like, if, if they typed stop? And it was still like, failed to send, remember that one, yesterday? I tried and it was still, and it was working as expected, I, I reactivated the external chat. Cause, cause it only works in, like, external chat only works in production fully. And I went ahead and I tried through it and. I was getting like, if you send stop. It says, you have been successfully unsubscribed, you will not receive any more messages from this number. I think that's different from exit. Uh, if you hit stop, then you just won't get any messages from that number altogether. Well, stop is your own, I thought it was your own programmatic way of doing it, like, it's not even the built-in Twilio method. I think this, I think this is still built in by Twilio, I put a safeguard in case it wasn't. Okay. But I see this message may not be mine, it says you have been unsubscribed, you will not receive any more messages from this number. Okay. Reply start to resubscribe. And then you hit start, it says, you have successfully been resubscribed to messages from this number, reply help for help. Reply stop to unsubscribe, message and data rates may apply. How do you know the thirty-six that you're looking at didn't message stop and they're not, how do you know they're actually receiving messages? How do we know they're receiving message? Uh, it says, well, some say, uh, sent and some say delivered. Uh huh, okay, how many are getting delivered? Thirty-six? Uh, let's see. It's not thirty-six. But it sent would not be that they're unsubscribed. If they're unsubscribed, it would say attempt to deliver to an unsubscribed recipient. But don't forget, it does say failed on your dashboard. Right, it would, it would say failed, yes, it says failed if it's an unknown number, if it's a unsubscribed recipient. Or if it was an outside country code. Okay, so it could still be sent to an unsubscribed recipient and then fail. It would return failed on the dashboard. Which is, we saw quite a few of those. We saw them yesterday. Yeah, you're not seeing them today? No, I'm seeing. Uh, undelivered. How, how did, how come they're not still failed anymore? Well, it, it's failed, it's like red. Yeah. It's there, there, we saw, I saw them yesterday, I assume they're still happening. Right, and I'm, I'm wondering where, where, where they originate, are they people that unsubscribed and were still paying for it, or it was? The program stopped that you did? Unknown destination handset. Okay. That. Unknown destination handset means that there's just a deactivated number. Right, those are the ones that failed to send? Yeah, it's like, it's either that or it says, like, for, for the UFC club, I felt, I. Went and I found the last message in the UFC club, which is Amin BL has joined the group. Yeah. And I'm looking at those and those are saying, like, either unknown handset or no permission to. Send to that region. How many got delivered? Delivered. Let's see, where, where does this message start? One, two, three, four. Six, seven, eight. Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna assume it's always the same twenty-nine. But maybe not. I can't just. I can't just query this table with SQL. It's okay. So.
So. Twenty nine delivered, that's really interesting. Have any of them responded ever?
That's, I would have to filter by their numbers. Let's see. This could.
This is, oh, this is one assignment I want for you and Todd, and I think Ian may be participating in this as well. To. Collect this data in a. Consistent way. And on a regular basis. Not just, but like all, all kinds of this um type of information. When it comes to external users. SMS. Versus push notifications. And uh. The different campaigns we're running. And making sure they work, these links don't break and things like that. We need to get insights on this. I can't remember what you said earlier, you said uh. Three people. From there, from that chat did download the app.
No one.
One did. You're sure?
Person sent the message. One person sent the message downloaded. And then from White Gorilla. It looks to be just Chelsea. Yeah, that, that's the only user I can't see where their inviter is White Gorilla.
Okay, I mean, maybe other people were added to the external chat, but maybe not. And then I would like to know just overall, maybe like in the last thirty days. Should be a good metric, how many people? Converted.
Okay, I can do that. Past thirty days or five. Last thirty days would be. Here. Sixteen, or no, um, no, that would be, let me grab the distinct count. Grab that number. Okay, sixteen, uh, but uh, some of them are Aaron Mullins. And let's see.
Test user.
Yeah. One of them is Aaron Mullins and that might be the only one I see. That would be one of those test users. Yeah, sixteen users in the past thirty days.
So fifteen?
Sixteen, oh yeah, fifteen, fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, that's not bad. Interesting.
Yeah, well, that was going strictly thirty days. We actually thought about another ten, if you stretch it out a week before that, it looks like a bunch of people came in between April fifth and April ninth. About, how many people is this? Nine, nine, nine users came in between those days, and that's like back an extra week.
Okay, great. So it is working. They were in external chat. Do you know how many people were in that external chat, like, was it a chat of four, five, ten?
Let me find the group key. Let's see. Never board club. Lot of them are uh never board club and fit by design with Liz. Yeah, a good bit of people came from that group.
Okay, cool. Know about that group.
Do you know who that is?
No, I think they might.
You wanna find out?
Yeah.
I could find out.
I'll ask them. Oh, you mean you're gonna find the users?
Yeah. I'll find who created the group. This here. Elizabeth Carter.
I don't know who that is. I think Zay might.
Her inviter. Let me see what she got to invite her. She doesn't have an inviter.
That sounds really familiar, let me check my DMs, I feel like she reached out to me and asked how to create a group.
Okay.
That, that sounds really familiar.
What's her name? Elizabeth Carter. Or Liz Carter, looks like she's in people's contacts as. Yeah, none of us have her in contacts.
How many people were in that chat?
Fifteen. A lot of them came over, then that means a lot of them came over as external users.
That's very encouraging, um. I want more information, I wanna know if Chantel did help. Because if she assisted. It's, I mean, it's still encouraging. But it. It raises a question, would a user be able to do this on their own? And if not, then we need to make it easy. For the user to figure it out without having to reach out to an admin or something like that, you know, it's where it happens organically, or maybe it did happen organically.
This was seven, uh, seven, seven external users and a group of fifteen converted over.
That's great. And is that still an active group chat then?
Let's see.
I really wish we had a search feature. In the live, in the lobby.
Last message sent was. Last night around nine PM.
Okay. So it is active.
There aren't a lot of messages, uh, it looks like that there was some activity. The very beginning, I see the group was created. April fifth. And there were some messages sprinkled through April. And then, yeah, in May. It kinda picks up again.
Okay. Do you know how many group chats there are? Over those last thirty or forty days? That contributed at least one external user to an internal user? I know this one did fifteen, but like, how many other group chats contribute at least one?
I see, uh, there, I can go through them. Let's see, there's one with a. Yeah, it looks like there's some without a group name, it looks like uh check-in tags.
But that's gotta be testing. Right, or no, is that live in twenty seven now?
Yeah.
Okay, so tell me about that, what do you see there?
It looks like one user from a check-in tag to. Uh, let me.
And not a test user?
Let me see who they are.
Cause that'd be cool.
DJ Elements. That would be. I don't know, it sounds like somebody's saying it would invite.
Yeah, no, he, he's actually worked for us, Fire Up, um, and he does the Sacramento Kings, he, he DJs for them. Um, so he's, he's really prominent, he came in through a tag, he was tagging a check-in?
Let me find this particular.
He was probably, he was probably invited by multiple people tagged in multiple, you know, he's pretty popular, so like, it'd be hard to say. Would, I mean, would you know the source?
I know he was an external user in this group. Uh, okay, there was, it was a group, it looks to be a text group, so it may not have been a check-in. Or, or no, sorry, hold on, uh, group key, I got, I'm looking at the wrong field, yeah, it was a check-in, he was tagging through a check-in.
Okay, how long ago?
Uh, the twelfth.
Okay, and then he onboarded through that link?
Where did he onboard from, so he wouldn't onboard it from. A link that would not, he doesn't have an inviter. So he would, he did not onboard from that link that says this gets credit for Zane.
Right, right, but it could have been more generic one.
Yeah, he would have. It's following DJ Elements joined and right away I followed him, but before. Um, I looked at his profile and saw that Zane was immediate, immediately following him when he came in, I thought maybe Zane had something to do with it.
Yeah, um.
I don't know how.
I wonder, um. What else do you see there?
Like, like, just other groups?
No, no. Like, so he was tagging a check-in and you don't, but you don't know what link you clicked?
He, he did not click the inviter, like, he didn't click that, remember how we sent a separate link that says this gives, I guess, Zane credit? For inviting you?
Yep.
He didn't click that one because Zane is not his inviter.
Yeah, but what about the other link for, cause like, when you get tagged and checking, there's a link. In that, in the, in both messages. So he could have clicked the more generic one. Is that? Do you have tracking on that?
The GR five had something on the GR five, what did we do? Or I can check here to. This is. DJ Elements. Okay, yeah, he didn't have an action queue. Uh, let's see, which means he wouldn't have came through the landing page. Let's see. Check in. This was a check-in at Mix Downtown. Profile key. Yeah, and he did not, I don't see a click on that link from Mix Downtown, so he would have came through GR five.
Who checked in there, what do you say, that was what the check-in was tagged in?
Right, I was looking at the check-in, he was tagged in, in case he came in through like a landing page for that for a while.
Yeah.
Um, and that would be tracked, and then the other thing that he could come through at that point is the GR five.
Okay, and that's the one you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause if you click the separate one, Zane would be his inviter, and if you click the profile landing view. Then the profile would have a view recorded in my analytics.
For which profile?
Mix Downtown.
Oh, okay, also, he could just go into the App Store, right?
Yes, that's another option.
Does the GR five have tracking on it? How many times did it click yesterday? What was that?
Let me check. I don't see anything right on that GR five, but we can add it.
Say it again?
I don't see any logic for tracking on that GR five link, but we can add it. It's in a separate repo from the other landing pages.
Okay, remember we talked about that, I want every link I'm tracking. Okay, so we don't, you don't know how, if it's ever in click, technically.
Technically, yeah.
All right. Okay, can you add tracking to that, please? Todd, do you know where Ian is? If he was gonna be part of this call? Are you talking to him?
I haven't, I don't, I haven't talked to him, actually, I checked with him early this morning around seven thirty eight, but I haven't talked to him about. Being a stand-up, so I'm gonna try to find out.
Okay, but this is where I want, this team effort between you three. I want all these links to have tracking. And not just tracking, I want, I want reports, I wanna know how many times it clicked yesterday, you know? Um, how are these users coming in? You know, and um. If were they invited, was it? External users, what, did they just come through the App Store, you know, all those things?
Right, and, and how do we, what, what do we have or what can I have access to? That tells me, I guess, or, or which way are we tracking this, like, um, when users come in. Probably wanna learn quickly where they're coming from. But how, where, where would I get access to that, like, when a user joins, for example?
It's not like the movies where you can just zoom in on a license plate and read it, right, so this, there's a lot of legwork. You're gonna work with Jerry, you're gonna work with Danny and Ian, and I can help too. And you guys are gonna. Construct everything, you're gonna ask the questions you're asking, and they're gonna. Yeah, I would actually start with the question of what do you want to know, like, what I wanna know. Is how do DJ Elements come into the app and why are you and Zane the only one following you? Where did we go wrong? That's, that's not good. That's, that's a fail, that's a big, that's an epic fail, I have a feeling since he was checked in, uh, tagging and checking at the mix Sunday night. Even though the date is the twelfth. Um, it was probably either after midnight. On Sunday. Which would be the twelfth. Or UTC, after UTC time, I, those are questions I don't have answers to, but I would want to know that. Then I wouldn't wanna know who he's with, he's probably with Laron and Zane, or I don't know who, why didn't Laron follow him? Like, what, how did it, how did he come in to an app completely? Completely unwelcome by all, by the whole community? Like, we're not gonna succeed. If this keeps happening, so I I want to know what what broke down and failed. Wh- what, why did no one follow him back? How did you see?
I I have, that's what I'm trying to do. I've been trying to figure out. I don't know if, um. I I'm thinking the only way that I even knew it is I think I must have him in my contacts.
Oh, no, he. He DJed very late. He onboarded at, it would be. At nine AM UTC, so that would be what, three in the morning or something?
Okay.
So that that was one thing.
Time is that Pacific time, for sure. I want to know the exact number.
Nine AM UTC, TST. Two AM.
Okay. So it was Sunday night, technically Monday morning.
Right.
So the mix is closing. I wonder if anybody else got notifications besides you, so you probably have them in your contacts.
And that would be. Yeah, uh, be the. And there are. There are nineteen people who have him in contacts.
Oh, wow. Nineteen users.
Nineteen. Uh, now. Now of those users, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven have not been in the app since. Last year.
Good, they probably got an SMS.
Yeah, let's see.
Let's confirm delivery on that. And maybe the wording of that needs to be changed, or maybe they would have come back in if they knew their friend. Came in, you know, he's he's an influential figure, like maybe they. I mean, a year, a year ago, the app was completely different, like they might come back in and and love it now and want to stay, especially knowing. One of their influential friends is in, and then it's way more. Uh, interactive than it ever was before, so. We're, we see where we're almost there. But we're still failing. And that's what keeps me up at night. I want to.
Twilio account, I think, was disabled at the time, was it?
Well, no, not necessarily, because Todd, well, wait a minute, maybe.
Let me think about this timestamp. No, this was yesterday.
Technically, it was. It was really late Sunday night, technically.
It was three AM Monday, right?
It was two AM Sunday night, which would be technically Monday.
Right.
Cause the mix is open on Sundays, it's a popular night.
Right.
He downloaded the app at the, at closing time, it sounds like. Which is technically Monday very early in the morning, but really it's Sunday night for. People who have, you know, they've been awake all day. So the question is that Sunday night. Was Twilio down?
Sunday night. I don't think so.
Okay, so can you see confirmed delivery? For the SMS? And then any other push notifications?
I don't see any note, any push, uh, not, sorry, I don't see anything in the SMS log, but something's telling me that. There is. Maybe a Twilio related reason to it, or there is a reason. Uh, in the logic. And it could be that.
So maybe no one is getting. The SMS when their friend joined, uh, but that's, we checked that like, like, early last week, I believe.
I think that only happens when you follow them. When you follow.
Oh, when your contact joins.
When your contact joins, but your contact going to, I think you have to follow them.
No. Definitely not.
Cause we. There was an SMS that just went out like a couple hours ago. Um, look who just joined Circles, Lind officials, all about sharing with you.
Yeah. I think that might be the one. But it's. Contact joins. Which that wording is probably shit, like, uh, uh, that was probably my first draft and it's. If we A B tested it, I bet I could, a monkey could write a better. Message than that and get better results. So. That's another thing, Todd, is like, we can A B, we can A B C D E F G test super easy. Like, you can come up with a bunch of variations of these messages, and within a short period of time, you're gonna see percentages emerging. Of ones with higher click-through rates. Uh, obviously the more engagement there is. And and we'll just ditch ones that are low percentage. And I don't, what's the percentage on that one? Jerry, do you have that? And see that, and the, the answer should immediately be yes, and I, and I suspect it's not, but that's where we need to get to. Those questions have to have immediate answers.
Um, I have, I have click logs on here and I don't, I don't see any clicks. I don't see any clicks going back. For a month.
So in a month, every person received that SMS, not one single person? Clicked the link?
That's what I see.
Okay, so I I suspect it was not a great message. But I didn't think it was that bad.
I see, I see some clicks in March.
You do see clicks, so, cause my question would be, well, do we know that it is even working? But if you see clicks. Then. It's not like it's broken.
And and then there's another part too, that. These users could already be be in the app, they just don't have push notifications, so they get the link and they just don't care about it because you already have circles.
That's possible, true, um, so, right, that's true, so there. It shouldn't perform at a super high level because of that.
Mm-hmm.
How do you know? You can cross-reference, like, I'm sure you can't do it in one second, but like, I'm sure if we did a little legwork. We could, and I, I'd want to be able to do this on a ru- routine basis, cross-reference, how many of those people? Are Circles users and how many are not? So let's say, I don't know, fifty of these went out, maybe that's way too, let's say ten went out the last thirty days. Um, were three. To existing users and seven non, or you know, what what's that breakdown?
Let's see.
The ultimate goal here, Todd. And Jerry. Is obvious, we, obviously, we want. Our users, especially the influential users. To pick up followers, like, we want their friends to know. They're in and get. So. That's how we're gonna measure success. Until we do that, we are not successful. And sometimes we do it. Uh, but not nearly enough and not. Reliably enough and and not, um. As. Maximized as I'd like it to be.
Yeah, 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 I definitely thought it was odd yesterday. Seeing DJ Elements come in somehow, I I can't tell you how I. Cause I don't have him in my contacts as DJ Elements, so I need his phone number to confirm, but, um.
Maybe Zane did a friend connect?
I can do.
I saw, I saw it too. But I don't remember.
Yeah, it's following.
Let me check, I'm going back to my notifications. I don't see a friend connect notification. I don't, I haven't seen many friend connect notifications, I haven't seen zero, but I haven't seen very many, and I find that odd, and that. This is stuff that really needs to be. Investigated and optimized. They should be firing off all the time.
And we are getting them as of. Looks like a couple hours ago, yeah, people are doing friend connects.
Okay, that's good. I mean, I pretty much know most everyone like in the app, I guess, or. Or that everyone that I know is in the app, or and everyone, almost everyone I know who knows someone should be, you know, probably by now. Which makes it harder for me to see them. But. Um. I still want to confirm. That these things are working, so. You were looking at some numbers there, Jerry?
Yeah, we were looking at the SMS logs and. And seeing how many of these users are people that are actually in the app or not. And. A lot of them are dormant users, um. I would say, yeah.
Okay, so how many total? Messages went out?
Messages went out. In what case, within what timeframe?
I don't know, what are you, I'm asking you, what are you looking at?
I'm just looking at everything right now, I mean.
All time, so all time.
Yeah, going back to. Uh, February.
Okay, so since February, all, that's our all times. You, do you know how many were sent?
Thirteen, fifteen.
One thousand three hundred and fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so what the, and that, but we don't know how, uh, how many of those were internal users and how many were external users? Or do you?
What do you mean external users?
Non-Circles.